And first on the agenda, it's kind of a special occasion for us. We have a presentation from the second grade class. Mrs. Deman, if I said that correctly, I apologize if I didn't. Her second grade class, and I hope we got the video up on the quilt that's over on the board that will be hanging permanently in the hallway of the town hall. Please come forward and grab one of the microphones so you're going out.
Okay.
Broadcast.
I don't think this is on. Is this on? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Ann Gaild, and I'm here today with some of the members of Mrs. Deman's class from last year to present a quilt that we worked on last spring and which the kids voted last year that they wanted to present to the town hall as a gift from us. As you may notice, it represents a lot of Southampton landmarks from the point of view of seven and eight-year-olds, and we put it together as a class with help from Mrs. Deman and from Mrs. Willunis as part of a, sort of an extension of a quilt project that Mrs. Deman and Mrs. Willunis do every year. Unlike the quilts that they usually do which are donated to hospitals and to quilts for comfort, this one we wanted to donate to the town hall. It's going to be hanging in the hallway outside, it's going to have a key so that you can see which children worked on which square and what the squares represent, and I was hoping that maybe some of the kids who were involved in the squares would be willing to come forward and talk a little bit about what their square represents. I'm going to start with the mailbox, which is square number one, and I believe both kids who are involved with that are here tonight. Can Patrick Day and Ellie Munier step forward, please? Would you like to come and stand over here next to this quilt, please? And just say a little bit about what your square is about.
My square is about the mailbox.
The mailbox. All attached here.
You don't have a word.
Thank you very, very much. Is there anything else you'd like to say about the project itself that you remember from last year? I know it was a long time ago.
Well...
Can you just say that again right here, just in case so you can go on TV?
It was...
Right, right on TV.
We had to draw a picture to, and then we had to squish our ideas together, so we just liked how it turned out.
That's exactly right. And then also, in addition to designing the squares, all the kids helped sew the quilt together, and we were extremely good sewers, I have to say. I was very impressed. Thank you both very much. Is anybody here who worked on square number two? Yes, please come forward, Mari. If you can stand next to me so you can talk into the microphone and say maybe a little bit about what your square is about?
I did the cemetery.
Sure did.
And I need a ghost in it.
A very appropriate ghost. Thank you very much, Patty. Thank you so much, Mari. And who is here that worked on the fire station? I believe Brianna is here. I'm sorry, I gave away your square. Do you want to say for your own self what the square was about?
The fire department, right, right next to us.
That's right. Do you want to maybe point to your square so that Mr. Floyd can take a picture of you? Showing it? Thank you very much, Brianna. I don't think anyone's here from square number four. See anybody here who worked on that one? Oh, okay. Does anybody, does anybody have any guesses about what that one might be? That is insane. Thank you. That's the only one we have. And Susannah, do you want to come forward and talk about the middle one here, the rather big one? And Rebecca can come forward too, since it was her brainchild. This is Rebecca and Susannah Biller. It was Rebecca's idea and Susannah's execution that created that square. What is that square, Rebecca?
It's the bowling alley.
Do you have any comments, Susannah?
No.
All right, then. Thank you both very much. Toby, I believe you're here to talk about the square on the right here. You can come talk into the microphone and say what your square is about?
It's about the public library that's, well, that's all.
That's pretty much what it is. Do you want to point to it so that Mr. Floyd can take your picture? Thank you so much, Toby. And Josh or Tyler here? I don't think so.
But I know it is.
Can you tell me, Sage, what that one is?
It's, I think, is Bishista's afterwatcher.
That is correct. Thank you very much. And we have some Bishista treats after, outside afterwards for people who want to partake. And is Mia here tonight?
No, she isn't.
No. Susannah, could you come forward again and tell us about this middle one? What is that middle square representing? Speak into here, please.
Fletcher's.
Fall? Yes.
Oh, that's...
Good memory. I know it was a very long time ago that you worked on it. Is anybody here who worked on that fall square trying to remember who it was? Yes. It is. Good guess. Can anybody tell me what it represents besides Mrs. Willunis? Does anybody know what that?
Corneille.
Thank you very much. And how about this beautiful square in the corner here? I believe Sage was invited to laugh. No, oh, she's going to do the telling. You come over here.
Yes.
Very gracefully done. Come and tell us a little bit about that square.
This is Conan Park, and I think that's it.
Thank you very much. I can say that Sage wrote very strongly at the time that there really needed to be a door in that building and that it needed to open up and show, I think, children inside, and that we didn't quite get there, and I apologize. That bottom square there, can anybody tell me what that bottom square represents? Does anybody remember?
What it is? I'm...
Anybody else besides Sage and Susannah want to venture a guess? All right, Susannah. Ellie, do you want to... Susannah, honey, you can tell me what that one represents.
I can.
Okay.
It's King Oak Fall.
Thank you very much.
And the eagle.
And Ethan, are you stuck here tonight?
Ethan?
You stuck, Ethan? No? Let's see if somebody else can tell us what that bottom square is besides Susannah and Sage. Does anybody have any guesses about the bottom one in the corner with the car? Does anyone remember what that one was?
No.
Patrick? Can you tell us what that is? Oh, Toby, I'm sorry.
It's the tennis park.
Exactly right. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comments, those of you who worked on it, that want to say about the quilt before we hang it officially in its new spot? Sage?
It was very fun and a lot of teamwork.
Well said.
And it took a long time.
It did. I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you, everybody here, for your patience. There are refreshments outside if anybody wants to partake before the real events begin, and now it's late.
You can put that on. Thank you, everybody, very much. Thank you all, and the quilt's going to hang in the hallways for everyone to see by the senior center. It's quite colorful. Do we go out color or not? Mike, don't say a word. No, stay out of my trouble. All right, all are invited to stay for our select board meeting, but some of us have At seven o'clock is our joint meeting, so we're a little ahead of schedule. Yep, let's go.
Is Cindy Flanders coming? Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
John Martin's got two. He wants to address the board.
John Martin wants to address?
John, you want to talk to the board? I know you've got another meeting.
Just wanted to give you an update on the meeting we had last night. The town administrator's screening, I just named it. We didn't have a name for it. We met for the first time last night. We looked at all the resumes, there was 19. We did a very high-level screening, and of the 19, 17 passed the very high-level screening. And that was the full charge as of that point. So, the committee discussed it, and they wanted me to come back as the chair to determine what our next steps were. And our thoughts were to, if we get a charge from the Board of Selectmen, to go back and do a one through 10, let's say, list of qualified individuals, then forward one through five, you know, making these numbers up, it's up to you folks, to the select board. And if you want us to do that, we'll meet again, and when we come up with the one through five, or whatever number it is, we would talk to the top five candidates before we gave you the names, letting them know that it was going to become public information, and we would verify that they were still interested, and also verify that the salary range for the position is indeed what they're looking at, so that somebody who was looking for a lot more wouldn't take a third time in our...
Jackie and... Jackie and Ed are on that committee? I'm the only one, odd man out.
I looked at Ed, and I blanked on the one.
So, this is something you, we're missing two members, which is unfortunate. We don't know whether they're coming either. Could we do this, John? Why don't we, with that in mind, let's see if the other, anybody else shows up tonight, and we'll take a vote on it later and send you a message out.
I'm going to be upstairs in finance.
And we've got messengers built in at either end of the table. All right? All right.
15 minutes, yeah.
So, this is... We've got a... We've got an election warrant.
That has, the election warrant has to be up today?
Seven days, but both Sandy and I believe it should be 14 because...
Yeah, I agree too.
All right, so let's do the election warrant. We have a proposed election warrant for the special election to be held on April 30th from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of electing a senator and congress for the Commonwealth. I would accept the motion to sign that warrant.
I'd make a motion to sign the warrant for the special election.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, you guys got to sign it.
Oh, that would help. I thought you had the power.
No.
I want you to move closer to us.
It's far away.
We also have a federal audit scheduled for April, April 16.
Planners Dollar Planning is requesting this documentation for the federal audit.
Because we're over $500,000 in a given year?
Correct.
With all ours or just them?
With ours.
Okay. Just a question, do you have an idea what this is going to cost us?
Actually, it was written in the grant.
Okay. If it is, I move to approve it. Because we do have to do those audits once we have $500,000.
All right, I have a motion to sign it. To hire the audit firm of Lansing and Heath, issue a report by June of 2013 for non-compliance regarding the CDBG grants. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to do that while we're here?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that only one section?
There's two. Original for me.
Oh, so do I have to sign that second original for me? And I saw Cindy come in, or, Miss, what are they? Cindy, how long are you going to need?
Um, seven minutes.
You got it.
Okay. I said break the copy of the package for restricted uses. What we need is, and I said through boat language here, this is the third time we're submitting to the Mass School Building Authority. Year three, they, they put forth the roof and funded that, but now we're asking them Also, we've mentioned heating system upgrade, ventilation needs on the second floor and cafeteria, or we can get windows and opening, that the fact the building was selling and to do some door repair, do some upgrades, energy upgrades in the electric room, sidewalk and driveway work, carpeting in the buildings, and gymnasium and church. So, basically, a kind of a renovation of the school. And so, what, obviously, what you're signing is that you disagree that the superintendent can submit this. It doesn't put the state under the obligation to fund it, and it doesn't put the town under any obligation to actually, if MSBA comes back and says, yes, we'll fund this, there's no obligation on your part to actually do it. Or just, this just gets you in the queue to get possible funding.
Questions?
Cindy, I have a question. Say they do approve it, and they say to you, okay, you can have this money, but you've got to spend it in a timeframe. It's basically going to be the same format that we did for the roof.
Yes.
We'll need a schematic, and we'll need upfront money and stuff like that.
Exactly. Don't be...
I think it's important that you realize that we need to have those numbers to work into our financial plan, you know? That's all I can say.
Yes. And I guess so. A few of these things are already actually being accounted for, so there's...
They might be in the capital plan. We haven't had a capital plan meet in over two years.
Well, yeah.
And it's kind of defunct, and there's really no money really there to speak of, to do items like we're talking about.
Well, as I said, this, all this does is lose business. State can come back tomorrow and say, you want to do it? You have to take a vote, you have to do what they need.
I know, but, you know, my thing is, is I'd like to have more time than we did in the last one. We were pressing deadlines through the whole thing, and I know it's difficult with a roof.
Yes, it's not our deadline, but it's...
I understand.
And the thing with this is, this is the third time we've submitted this. The usually doesn't move that fast. They could, they just kind of decided to do it after. I would say that, you know, submitting this, we have to submit it by April 10th. They'll decide sometime during July.
So, this is, this is predicated on a bond bill that hasn't been passed yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I don't think that this would, I don't think that, like, they'd say, okay, you can do this next year. I think it's going to out... I hear, but the roof was, they apparently just decided to do larger roofs because they accelerated that program.
I think it's also important to get this into the queue because there are some potential boiler issues, some window issues, so that if that, we do coincide with approval from the school building authority at a time when we need to replace the boiler, you might get that reimbursement, but certainly, we may be back here next year with the same kind of things going forward to the next, to the next year.
I just want to reiterate, we need a lot more time and a corporation to find this money and move it. We have a lot of steps we have to do.
And so, that is, this is year number three we've submitted this. I would think that my successor, working with the town of Southampton, who had to go forward into 2015, like, think about some, some of the issues, or at least think about having money set aside.
Which means, even my question, any idea what, not that this shouldn't go in, but how much this totals for projects?
I don't know, but I'm assuming between the...
Are you talking about the boilers?
And a few other things.
Oh, it was over a million dollars.
Probably a million, I would assume.
And best we can hope for is a 50%, 50, 55% reimbursement, which means we're another half million dollars out of the town coffers, and we just put $700,000 on the roof repair, and we're looking at another $500,000 at least.
And that's why we need time to plan.
Right.
And, but I'll tell you, this year alone, I think we've got $40,000 in the boilers.
In repairs?
Yes, and to what we've been doing the last couple of years.
And just, you know, where do we find that extra 50, 45 to 50%?
Oh, I understand that. And as I said, this, this just gets you in the queue. This doesn't guarantee, in fact, they say in their ready with their stuff, they don't guarantee they're going to do this, it's outside of the nature of the life of the roof.
Now, is the pothole program still?
Father...
And I know it's deceiving, they use that pothole language in the school system, but that's fixed potholes, or projects that you have, it's kind of a wrong term to use.
The official name is foundation reserve. Which is also confusing, because confusing with another program. Yes, it is. It's been very long, but they've only set, like, $5,000 across the state. The last couple of years, the funding for it has been really, they had strict guidelines. You can apply, yeah, your enrollment increased by this percent, you can, you know, your contract, your minimum contribution, and we haven't met those criteria. This year, they put one in for extraordinary expenses, so we've had a couple fed-related tuitions that we hadn't known about. And so, we have an application in for that. I don't, not that $5,000 or $10,000 isn't a lot of money, but I'm not imagining there would have been much out of there. I haven't seen, that went in, like, last month, and I've been checking the website to see if they award you, but they haven't got anything out.
No, I was just curious, because I know you were lucky, a couple of years in a row to get money.
Right. Now, there, but in the last, probably three, four years, the awards they've been giving, as I said, it's been really very tight restrictions on what you can apply for, and they really haven't been giving out a lot, you know? The year we got it was, like, $500,000 or something. They've been giving out anywhere near that.
I was just curious if that was still around. Jackie has a question.
I have a question. Besides the roof, because we know we're going to get that done sooner than later, is there anything else that is just dangerous or something that you need to get done sooner than later? Or you could allocate funds for that you're very concerned?
The only thing that comes to mind, you know, is the boilers, that if, you know, if we come up with, like, a media meeting of boiling repairs, that's the only one that I can think of. Some of this, you know, doors, this wall, moving, electrical upgrade, some of those could increase energy. And the one that's, I hear, that we're really working on for at least five years is ventilation cafeteria gymnasium, yeah, on the second floor because it's really hot.
Isn't any mold or anything in the ventilation, ventilation system that you're concerned about? Has that ever been checked?
Well, we have, we re-carpeted, went way into school, and there's a few other places that you can do.
They're glycol, but that's been a problem.
You know, and we've, of course, had water infiltration, so the, well, we've been, we've been hearing that, and they've been checking.
They don't spend money on insulation. They're trying to do this.
Okay.
I think the concrete entrance to the school also is moving up in priority just because of the cracking, the weathering, and it has proved been trying to fix it. I know it's had different repairs, but I think there's some need to repair, change where that water courses off the roof before that can be repaired. But I think, you know, we do need to look at the priorities, and I think that's a really good question, as Cindy mentioned, which is kind of in the same segment of interests as we have, boilers and windows and doors. We've got a little bit of priority because as Ed says, where do we get the money? And I think when, when MSBA comes back and says, we approve, I guess, well, this way, we'll give you this, it may be that the town will say, we only want to take advantage of the first two or three priorities.
Right, right, to make sure it's a safety, take care of that first.
Yeah, I think those doors are a concern, problems, and they're starting, they're rusting from the inside, and you, and I think they're not repairable, but they're still in function.
Right.
A question on the boilers, and I hate to sound old, but I was on the building committee that did the school.
Excuse me.
Which...
No, I should...
Which was only 20 years ago, in the scope of things. You know, those are gas boilers. I would, it seems incredible that at this point in time, those gas boilers are giving you this kind of problems. I mean, we had problems when we first got them in, which is why they've got glycol in them now, so that they don't freeze up anymore. But after that, I mean, those, talking to Ed, those boilers should last twice as long as they have.
I know, but like I said, you know, just every year they do repairs on them.
Do we need an engineer to work on them?
Yeah.
What were the repairs this year for $20,000?
I think, I think we're up to $20,000.
Is that, but are you talking to controls, or are you talking to boilers?
I'm talking to boilers.
Because you do spend a lot of money on controls too, a lot more every year.
Yeah. Well, I have some combination of yours.
Okay.
Yes, boiler and bill.
Oh, okay, well, the controls probably are related to the boilers, and that's an ongoing thing you gotta do every year. I'm just interested in what kind of bills you have there this year, if I get a chance. Does Bill have those, or you have them up to high school?
We have them up to, yeah, we have copies.
I mean, I don't make, I just want to see what kind of repairs they were.
Actually, we have copies, but you're telling company that it happens too, because we send, we send the warrant down here.
Well, I don't know who your, I would have to find out who your contractors are.
Was he a professor, gamer?
Do we need engineers?
Well, we'll see what they have, and, you know, it might be something they can do. I don't, I mean, my feeling is, the bond bill's not even paid off on those boilers, and they were part of the last school, and they should last way beyond the bond bill. And we should find out what's causing that problem.
That being said, we have, we should, we all want to get in the queue to get in line.
As long as you have the queue, everybody.
Yeah.
As I said, this is, this is a certain year. I'm not sure how far out their funding project. Springfield just announced some renovations, but I think they're, they're a very high percentage, and they kind of have priorities.
Well, if you, if you remember, Cindy, we had Siemens in here doing an energy audit in, on all our buildings, and that was highlighted also in the energy audit, and the ventilation was too. So, I mean, it's not like we haven't heard it before.
Oh, no, no, everything in here, like, everything in here is, like, three years old. There's nothing new, and it's been, they've been on low and dry. It's, no, not, it's not like this is, if anything in here is, oh my God, we have to do it, you know, it's a surprise.
And one thing, I mean, this is my thought, I didn't talk to the board about it, if there's improvements that can be made, that might be expensive to extend the longevity of it, but in the long run saves us costs and operation costs over the next five years. We should look at that, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, every year, actually, we've looked at the ventilation issue as far as cafeteria and, and second floor.
Oh, we know, especially, and when we have a town meeting, they'll be all rose.
And, I mean, I think that that's probably going to come up as an issue this June, since we're going to June 28.
Is that out for public consumption at this point?
Unless, I mean, you know, unless we have a nice, cool June.
Well, we had a nice, cool March compared to last March, which was in the 70s and 80s all month long, so maybe your hopes will come true.
Yeah, but we don't want any more snow, that's why.
I would take a motion to sign the Mass School Building Authority's submission.
I'd make that, I'm going to make that motion.
Somebody's got it.
I'd make that motion. Mass School Building Association.
That's okay.
Authority.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's three places decided.
There's only two labels, Cindy.
There should be three. There should be one, like, the second P, there should be one someplace in the middle of the notes.
I mean, there's two for each, each signature. No, I mean, there's two for each, each signatures.
There's, there's like three, two.
Why don't you come on up, Cindy, make sure we get this done right? Because I. So this, oh, this, this.
Well, I was just saying you haven't closed the school in ten years, and you're not ready.
Did you finish the house?
What?
You finished the work on the house?
No. Cindy, do they have to read this out verbatim, or?
Uh, yes, actually, that's.
Oh, that's, oh, okay.
And I will, I will leave copy in the minutes, or like April tenth.
Okay, okay.
All right, Cindy, are you looking to take these back with you tonight?
Uh, yes, because tomorrow at the school committee's meeting, and they'll decide if they've done.
Um, so somebody needs to fill in all the other information.
Okay, uh, I have to resolve this, I mean, make a motion. Uh, having convened in an open meeting on the twenty-seventh of March two thousand thirteen, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Southampton, in accordance with the Charter, Bylaws, and Ordens, has vowed to authorize the superintendent to submit to Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, for the William E. Norris School, eighty-four Pine Mountain Road, Southampton, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, uh, Priority Five, replacement, renovation, modernization of school facilities for the resealing, exterior walls, heating and cooling systems, electrical upgrades, ventilation, carpeting, bleachers, door replacement, and parking lot repair. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form Massachusetts Building Authority is in no way guaranteed the acceptance of all approval of this application, the awarding of a grant, or any of the future funding commitments for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits to city, town, or regional school to file an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
How to say something in a thousand words. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And actually, if you wanted to keep it up for, um, years.
Future?
So, well, no, for, you know, for concluding minutes or instead of everything.
It's scanned.
Oh, scanned, um.
And well, he's noted it as moved and approved. Okay. And at this point in time, I would, thank you, Cindy. Cindy, are you retiring?
July thirty-first. What does it count, why does it count?
At this point in time, I would invite the planning board forward for a joint meeting with the select board on the master plan committee, on master plan. And everybody's got a master plan, that's the roof replacement master plan book. Oh, I mean, obviously, the master plan committee also. And David's somewhere in the audience, and he was gonna lead the meeting, I believe. Oh, Cindy, my guest, they gave you a microphone somewhere. That one's fine.
I'm the chair of the master plan committee. Uh, the master plan effort began almost four years ago, as longstanding members of the committee understand. We have what we hoped was our last meeting, uh, last Thursday. Uh, the next step is for the planning board to review the plan and vote to accept it or not to accept it. And I'm not sure, frankly, whether the voters accept or approve, uh, or adopt, but that can be worked out. Uh, we hope that when and if that happens, subsequent to that, perhaps at the annual town meeting, we would ask the voters to endorse at least a summary of the plan, since it's kind of hard to ask them to endorse the whole plan, and most of them would not have read it, we'd say to bet. I wanna point out a couple of things. First of all, uh, the plan is only a plan, and nothing in it will happen unless the various boards and commissions and townspeople charged or, or get suggestions about things to be done, carry it forward. Uh, David Arvin of the Pine River Planning Commission has been carrying the ball for the commission for the last several months. Uh, one of the reasons why it's taken a little longer than it was originally planned is there was turnover in their staff, and there were some glitches along the way. However, we are on the home stretch, so I'm gonna turn this over to David.
Before, before we do that, if you want something on town meeting, it would have to be a warrant article.
Yes, I did speak to Reggie about that, and we'll get that ultimately clarified.
Thank you.
Here's your microphone. I don't know if you can.
Well, this one, my, the one I'm gonna give my phone to, this one could come over there.
There's a wire there, is it making it all the way over?
Yeah, it'll come mostly away, I think, I hope.
That's okay?
Yeah. David, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, um, to members of the select board and members of the planning board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about the master plan. As Hank mentioned, I'm one of several staff people who over the past, uh, three years or so has worked with the town. Our role has been to facilitate the community's preferences. Uh, we've worked with the master plan committee, here's a list of, of the members. We've had some come and go over the years. Real quickly, a master plan is a snapshot in time. If we were to do this two hundred and fifty or three hundred years ago, we'd have a very different looking master plan than you have before you tonight. The idea is to be comprehensive, provide you both with detailed information and also vision, so that you can see where the community is aspiring to go. And also so you can get an idea about how you begin to prioritize the actions that are suggested in the master plan. And it's also important to remind everyone that this is not a legally binding document. We had some questions about that at our, our open house. The topics are of the community's choosing. There is some, you know, general practice about what goes in a master plan, but this is the community's vision. The process, again, uh, we, uh, working backwards, last, last week, the master plan committee met, endorsed the plan. Prior to that, we had a pretty good meeting, open house, uh, many of you over there, with twenty-three residents attending. We got, uh, pages of comments from that. The committee has addressed all those. Prior to that, we had, uh, you know, years worth of editing the document, going over the data, but prior to that, visioning workshops, so a lot of participation, you know, at least a couple hundred residents have had input to this throughout. I'm, I'm just wanting to, um, just spend a minute on the vision part of this, the vision thing. Uh, because this is the essence of what has come out of this young process. And this is, would be on page one of your documents, so it's the first thing that you see. And I won't read out of bullets, but some of the ones that, that jump out to me are, uh, the community supports redevelopment and redevelopment that are in harmony with natural resources. Um, the, the plan also reflects the citizens' desire to ensure the historic features of the town are preserved, and that there's conscientious maintenance of common community infrastructure assets. Uh, well, as summed up in the last bullet, the community wants to ensure that the next generation of residents is able to enjoy a community that is even better than the Southampton of today. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Robert Cloyd for making this report look a lot better. You wouldn't have other wise done. He's provided a lot of, uh, great support here visually. These are the chapters of the plan. Uh, I'm gonna step through each of these fairly quickly. My goal right now is to give a summary of the summary. So for each of these chapters, I'll give you a quick, quick hit on what some of the key information is. Then you're gonna see a list of goals for each. Uh, there's typically four or five goals for each of these chapters, and then for each goal, there may be two, three, or four strategies. And there's not time to go through the dozens upon dozens of those strategies. Those are in your document. Uh, I would encourage you, if, if we have time to discuss afterward, uh, we can go through, through those more specifically. This is a snapshot of our demographics in town. And Southampton has been one of the, uh, most steadily and fastest growing communities in the valley. And we see, we expect that to continue in the coming years. I wanna call attention to a demographic change, though, that is different from that. We're expecting the baby boomers to really start to become an even greater significant, a more significant part of the population. Uh, it's already doubled from two thousand, uh, in the most recent census. Now, at least one in five residents are over age sixty. That's gonna continue to increase. So maybe think about what that means for our housing options, uh, community services, a whole range of things. On the housing part of the chapter one issue, uh, again, we've seen some of the fastest growth in the Pine River Valley in the last twenty years, thirty percent. Here's another interesting demographic phenomenon that's going on, is while our population has gone up thirty percent, the number of housing units is up even more. And the number of households is also up even more than the number of people. So what that means is your average household size is decreasing, and you see that number at the very bottom of the screen. Twenty years ago, we had nearly three people per household. Today, it's closer to two and a half people. So here is, uh, as I mentioned, uh, an example of how the, the goals and strategies are laid out. This is our first goal for the housing chapter, balance redevelopment, residential development with protection of natural scenic and historic resources. And so you see under that, uh, a series of three strategies to suggest how we get there. And then these are also repeated in the implementation chapter, in chapter nine, along with responsible parties and, uh, suggested implementation priority. And so, uh, these are the main goals in chapter one. And to give my summary of the summary, uh, this, this is from the summary of the entire plan, uh, on page three. To boil down the goals, it would be to proactively manage the strong demand for housing due to Southampton's desirable residential characteristics, and provide the range of housing types that better serves all segments of the housing market. So that's the essence of what the plan is talking about in chapter one. Chapter two is the economic development chapter, and some of the highlights. We have more than a thousand people working in town. You can see the average salary. We have unemployment rate that's lower than the state average, and as you know, the state average is lower than national average. So, uh, employment is fairly strong in town. Wanted to call out farming, that's one of the important industries in town. And of the forty-three working farms, twenty-eight are listed as, the owners say this is, this is their primary occupation. So it's not a part-time or a hobby type thing. And another important part, the way the workforce is changing, is people are working from home, with the home occupation businesses, uh, consulting firms. We have two point six percent of that in Southampton. That's a little lower than, uh, the regional average. So there's opportunities, I think they're about to grow. Our top employment categories for the jobs that are existing in town, retail, uh, has the most number of people you can see. More than three hundred people working in the retail industry in town. Followed by accommodation, food service, and construction, which I found pretty interesting, is, is your third biggest employer in town. An interesting land use issue related to economic development is that one percent of the town is zoned commercial. And that's the area along the East Hampton Line and then the, uh, Town Center, uh, commercial, the Village Commercial District. So the summary of our economic goals would be focusing economic development on destination types of businesses and recreational opportunities. Commercial development should continue and remain concentrated in the designated business zones. And the industrial district should be relocated to an area with sewer service. So that's the essence of chapter two. Historic cultural resources, uh, got a lot of emphasis, the, the plan provides, uh, a nice inventory that was done. I think, um, we got the mass historical, uh, records for a lot of the resources in town. Bonnie Parsons from PBPC did a lot of work on this, and we got a lot of great input from, uh, people in the community. These are the two historic districts. Uh, they've been corrected since our, our meeting last week. Uh, the two areas were, uh, we had, um, mass historical and, and, is it? I'm looking for a little help on the name of the, the national agency.
National Historic.
National Historic Register. So this is where we have resources that are associated, um, with, with that agency. And the cultural side of things, uh, the outreach we did, talked a lot of, we got a lot of feedback about how the landscapes, uh, both the agrarian, farmer-led, and the scenic views, particularly from a lot of the roads, are, are very important to the town's identity. And, uh, the summary of this chapter is pretty simple. Preserve important historic features of the town. That's, uh, pretty straightforward, and, uh, it, it, I would say, uh, Hank might, might, um, back me up. History is very important. It, it was repeated time and again, um, in this process is, is something that the people of the town value. Our chapter four, um, we got a lot of feedback, but residents, or people participating in the master planning process want this rural character to remain, the woods and the farms. And they're also seeking new opportunities for passive recreation, hiking, trails, uh, that type of thing. And again, looking for the type of growth in the community that's balanced with the protection of those resources. This map shows, this is from the Open Space Plan, and it shows the areas that are still, uh, in a natural state that haven't been developed. And interestingly, at least the fifth of the town is already, uh, being used in, in open space for, in recreation. The farmland piece of the equation there is important here. The active farmland as of two thousand and five are the green shaded areas. And, uh, important highlight, just from our ability to analyze the change in land use going back to, uh, the state's land records back to nineteen seventy-one, there's been a lass of almost, a little more than a quarter of the farmland in town. And so that may be, uh, fueling people's interest in wanting to preserve and protect what is left. For the latter goal, chapter four, and I'll summarize the summary here with, uh, uh, open space natural, natural resource. Continue to pursue, pursue opportunities to preserve open space and natural resources consistent with the Southampton Open Space and Recreation Plan, and integrate the Southampton Greenway into the town's existing trail network. So, um, a, a general feeling there of, uh, wanting to continue to protect the natural areas. And then the specific calling out of the Greenway as one of those examples of a, um, passive recreation, um, facility that is desired in the future. Mobility, fancy work for transportation, getting around. We'll start with, um, the traffic counts on Route Ten. And I found this pretty interesting. There's been significant, uh, traffic increase on Route Ten in the last, uh, decade. You can see that the top number on the, um, little box there is the percentage increase since two thousand and two. And then the bottom number is the average number of trips per day, uh, that are going past this section of highway. So up at the East Hampton, uh, town line, for example, you have about eighty-one hundred cars per day in both directions. And you can see it ramps up down, um, in the middle of town, significantly increased. And then as you get down toward the southern border, it drops a little bit. We had a question come up at the, um, open house, and I wanted to show a close-up on this map. They wanted to know, uh, we had a statistic on number of crashes. This is from PBPC's, um, uh, transportation, uh, and traffic counting work. And there's a, between fifty and sixty car crashes each year, and each year is symbolized in a different color. I think, uh, the gold is two thousand and nine, blue is two thousand and eight. I think the gold is 2009, blue is 2008, and red is 2007. And I was incorrect at last week's meeting, I thought there were no fatal, but there was one fatal crash, I believe in 2007. So these, you can see, not surprisingly, most of those are happening on College Highway. There's also a lot of discussion at the meeting last week about sidewalks. And we understand there may need to be some minor corrections on this. The brown lines here are showing existing sidewalks. And then the purple dashed are those that would be a priority in the next one to five years. The red dashed, priority for the next six to ten years. And then the kind of turquoise dashed further down the line, eleven to fifteen years. It's interesting, this, the sidewalks came up in the context of the economic development chapter. People wanted to get right to the sidewalks. People at the meeting last week anyway were making a connection between accessibility to business, the ability to walk there. A couple of comments that people are walking along the side of the road anyway, you can't stop them. So they're interested in how we can better accommodate them. And then the Greenway, proposed Greenway, couple of possibilities, and I understand, you know, the process is still fluid on this, but it could be anything from the type of facility you see in East Hampton on the Manhattan Trail, which would be a paved, paved trail with gargoyles on the side. Or it could be something unpaved, like you see an example from Ohio that I've picked off the internet there. So there's a range of decisions yet to be made, I think, about the Greenway. And we have other mobility options, opportunities that were discussed in the visioning session. Safe routes to schools was mentioned as an opportunity to help maybe improve sidewalks. Slap McCarley gave us some good information on how a grant is actually coming through on that. So part of this is moving forward already. Access management on the major roads is basically cleaning up driveway and improving the geometry so you can try and address some of those frequent accidents that are happening out there. There's a lot of support for increased bike facilities. And walking loops got a lot of attention. And we did include three proposed walking loops as part of the, I think they included as appendices in different parts of town, acknowledging that people like to rock for recreation, exercise and such. Summarizing the goals here would be to create a more desirable, create more desirable transportation options, so a range of options, especially for walking, bicycling, and public transportation. A sidewalk survey found many residents rock for ends and exercise. And a preliminary concept for improved walking and bike routes has been developed, and so that's included as part of the plan. Chapter six deals with public services and facilities. And it's quite a, quite a number of things to be included in one chapter. We're talking about the five major buildings in town. They recently undergone an energy audit, and so we're looking at how we improve the efficiency of those buildings. There's also the disposition of the older buildings and how will they be used in the future. And then going back to the demographic phenomenon of the increasing senior population, how are elder services going to be responding to that, the town's elder services? Schools are also part of the chapter six area, topical area. And there's some discussion about upkeep on the school prior to this meeting. So I think that is on the minds of a lot of people in town. We got information last week about how the percentage of students using school choice, coming in for school choice is up from, it's up from nine percent, I think, three years ago, to twelve percent in the most recent year. And more school, I think it's no secret that there's some interest in maintaining that in a state of good repair. And then the library has a significant section for discussion in the plan. Couple of issues that jump out from that are the rates of full-time equivalents, that's full-time employees, have a lower rate than comparable sized libraries. And that is creating a gap between the number of operating hours, the amount of operating hours and the staff that are available for it. Also in chapter six, there's a discussion about water lines and priority for sewer areas. See if I can make the, see if the labels will come on. Some of you are probably familiar with this. Well, that's interesting. My computer just shut down. Let's see if it comes back. And frozen. Well, I'm going to answer to talk about the sewers. Well, let the list go. There we go. All right, so the labels aren't going to come up on this section, but you can see the circles indicating these four phases from a couple of studies in the past for addressing the issue of wastewater treatment. How's that going to be handled in the future? Lot of goals expressed for chapter six. To summarize these, I'm going to each of them, but it would be to carefully manage and maintain the town's infrastructure. And the plan also says it'd be important to build a public safety complex to modernize police and fire capability. So there's a lot going on here. Some of them, I will take a second and just call it terms, like six, five. Some of these solutions are less costly than others. And you may get more bang for the buck with those. We had a couple of comments last week that people would appreciate more information on the town website, for example. That's a fairly low-cost solution to deal with something that is on the mind, the minds of residents. Our energy chapter really is an attempt to look at how Southampton can come up with its share of the Massachusetts goal, which is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and that's carbon, methane, and similar greenhouse gases, twenty percent by the year 2020, and then eighty percent by the year 2050. So those are pretty aggressive goals. The state as a whole is moving in that direction. PVPC just did a greenhouse gas inventory that finds we're just about level with where we've been in nineteen ninety. So we have continued to grow, so that means some savings and reductions in greenhouse gases occurring. But to achieve these kinds of goals, it's important for everybody to be thinking about how do we get there? So that's a lot of what this chapter looks at. It underscores it also, in addition to the greenhouse gas piece, we pay a lot more for electricity in Massachusetts than the national average. And so to the extent the town is accustomed to electricity and the residents of the town, we jumped to that statistic here, you can see in kilowatt-hours, the relative proportions of electricity that's being consumed in Southampton. The municipal piece is a relatively small chunk of this, but the municipal also has the ability to kind of be the leader, if you will. And so the reference earlier to the investment audit, I think this, these last things were done prior to the more detailed audit that was done. But there are opportunities through electrical efficiencies and also through some other related energy upgrades to be achieving some savings with our town buildings. And so the energy goals would be to increase energy conservation and produce more renewable energy within the town to help reduce energy costs and the building of fossil fuels. So I think embodied in here is the green goals, but there's also the economic development goals because local, local energy, solar panels on your own roof essentially make you a producer of energy and allow you to be selling a commodity back into the grid. It allows you to get a break on your, on your energy bar and helps a variety of goals all at the same time. And then the other thing that should call out here is the fourth goal, which would be to obtain green community status. And that program has a number of benefits. Typically, there is close to a hundred thousand dollars in state assistance for further energy efficiency implementation, you know, can go to town staff who are working on those types of activities. And so that's, that's something that the plan calls out as would be a priority. And finally, the last, the topical chapter is on land use. You can see the vast majority of the town is still enforced. Some of the, the ratters have fairly large areas as well. There've been some important changes in land use over the last thirty years. And I would just call attention to, if you look at the ones with the greatest number of acreages, not the ones necessarily with the largest percentage changes, but the proportion there in active agriculture, the first line, I think is important to look at again. That's telling us we've had a loss of six hundred seventy-six acres of active agriculture. The lot acreage increase is down at the bottom, residential lots greater than a half acre. And you can see the large number of acres there that have been converted from other uses to residential use. There's still additional area in town that is available for development. And you can see here, it's highlighted in yellow. If you compare that to your zoning districts, you can see Weller primarily, I just flip back and forth between the two maps here, those areas of Weller are mainly in the residential rural areas, which is where you have your larger lot sizes. So you continue to have that type of development in the future. So based on that and the areas where Weller will have significant concentrations of development, the plan proposes what we're calling four planning focus areas, and those are the P one, two, three, fours that you see here along College Highway. And then the open space focus areas, which are OS one, OS two, OS three, and OS four. These are the areas where the plan says, just given all the input and all the issues that are facing us, you know, trying to bring it all together and concentrate development where it's already concentrated and keeping space open where it's open and people have several wanted open. These are generally where you want to be thinking about focusing your planning efforts in the, in the future. And so to go into the future, and here's our land use goals. There's a variety of them here. I guess includes, the summary includes several proposals about mixed-use zoning in areas of town where it's appropriate. So I think acknowledgement that they may be trying to look at some other types of zoning to help achieve, again, that continued growth in compact areas so that we can maintain the balance that people say they're looking for with the natural areas. And finally, the implementation, which I think will be of great interest to the select board. The plan proposes that in order that it not sit on the shelf after it is, you know, down to town meeting and endorsed, that there'll be a group that continues to work with it to facilitate the work of people in town who would be involved in implementing some of those strategies that you see in chapter nine. The plan recommends that the select board be the body that determine how long the terms of these members are. You know, you're certainly welcome to revisit that. It recommends that the committee set up its own governance, elect its own officers, and that it make quarterly reports to the select board. I think that's pretty much it. Our next steps were, we made it to March twenty-sixth. I guess the next steps would be discussion with the planning board, with your process. We're happy to provide any more information that you would want for your discussion of the plan. And then looking ahead for the select board to be considering how that implementation committee gets up and running. Because PVPC, as part of the project, PVPC will be available to do implementation activities through the end of this calendar year.
Questions?
Any questions?
Could you give the board of select and maybe the planning board two various examples of the duties of the implementation committees that you've dealt with in the past? What their duties would be and what their authority would be and what their goals and objectives? That would be helpful.
I will find that and include that as an appendix. Generally, my experience, just tapping up experience I'm familiar with, it's an advisory committee.
I understand, but it might be helpful to have what other advisory committees, how they work with this. Basically, right now, what I see is establish a committee and you leave them on their own. We should be at least giving some guidance to begin with.
Right. And the plan has, you know, upwards of a hundred strategies, so you may want to give them the charge, which of these is important. There'll be a lot of working with the planning board. A lot of the strategies do deal with zoning, regulatory subdivision types of issues. Yes, sir.
Just on the April vote of the planning board, is that a regular meeting or a hearing?
I believe you hold a hearing on.
So that law current April. Because that has to be published two weeks in advance, so that's probably the first we get to that is May. If it can be at a regular meeting without having public notice, anytime we might be able to get to that in April. But with the notification requirements, we won't be able to estimate.
Let me confirm that and I'll get an answer tomorrow morning to make sure any hearing is required.
Is the intent of the planning board action to get that ready for the select piece that wants to be on the company?
I wouldn't speak for Hank.
When it first?
On that unless you authorize me.
May twenty-first.
John, I think if the planning board votes to approve anytime before the town meeting, if there's a warrant in the town meeting, calling for the endorsement by the town meeting, a kind of summary of the plan, perhaps a presentation like this, if they approve it by the time of town meeting, just pass over the warrant.
May twenty-first is town meeting.
I'm just, logistically, I'm just wondering if you need that action to occur in order to get it out of town meeting.
I think it'd be helpful for the citizens to know you passed it.
Right.
Not passed it. I don't think it's all working in your favor if you didn't do anything.
Logistically, we could put a warrant article on, you could ask us to put a warrant article on, have it there. If you don't, if you don't do your part with a meeting or hearing, then we'll just pass that over.
I had always assumed, knowing the law, that public hearings would be required, but maybe it's not.
I'll get an answer on that tomorrow, Bobby.
I probably had seen something earlier that said it was a regular meeting, not a hearing.
It's hard to, to do.
I'll check and get back to you.
Because it isn't a change to the charter, it isn't a change to bylaw.
There's no action either.
And there's not a mandatory action, it's not a required action.
The plan itself doesn't change anything.
No, it just didn't rise anything.
Well, the open space plan would require a verentual approved, this planning board.
This is a master plan that, you know. It seems like it would be a quick phone call to town council or some, or why don't we do both? I'd ask Brad to make a quick call to town council and tell them we're looking at a, if I may, John.
Your meaning?
Well, I'm thinking about implementing a master plan. Planning board needs to take a vote. Does it have to be a public hearing or can it be just a regular meeting? And can you distribute that answer after you find it?
Yeah, whatever happens, when the planning board takes this up, I think David can be there if necessary. And certain members of this community are the master planning. And certainly members of this committee are the master plan committee.
Oh, no, I intend to. Yeah.
Just, can I stop? Chief, did you want something? Oh, okay. You came and stood in the door very ominously, so I was concerned.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just have a quick question about, um, chapter two. Um, regarding, um, you know, our budgets are really tight and, um, I come from Ohio and we have, you know, um, an economic, we have a lot more corporate taxes. And I moved to Southampton because it's quiet and we don't have a lot of traffic and I really appreciate that and it's been a wonderful place to bring up my children. But on the other side of that coin, I'm not advocating having a bustling, you know, um, corporate base here. But in chapter two, you're talking about the sewer system and I had asked Ed and other members about the sewer system in our town, that we don't have the right facilities in order to have more economic development. Did your organization look into that a little bit more about the possibility of maybe getting a little light corporation, you know, industrial base here that would help with the tax base? They, or could we implement a committee to do that with this information? Would it help?
It may have predated me on the committee. Uh, I don't know if there was talk, there was talk about relocating the industrial district to an area with sewer. I think that was one of the key recommendations to come out of there.
That's been discussed over the years.
I think about 10 years ago, um, there was a committee establishing business people, Economic Development Committee, and they went around for about a year locating sites. And for the most part, it all came back, they needed water and sewer to entice them. That's what they came back to. I think Hank, Hank, you, I think you were planning board chairman at the time.
You had a development plan?
No, the Economic Development Group, um, uh, the guy who owns the center of town, Dumont and that group, they put that, that thing together and they reported back to you. But it was, all the projects came back, that they needed sewer and water for the most part. And others that they didn't want for themselves properly, you know.
See, that's an example of potential, that is, if you put in a sewer, then you're going to have more of a town to develop, rather than scale it off. Because then the constraint on housing density is removed. Well, a lot of people are close together, you got sewer, you can't do it now. So there's a lot of things that have to be checked in the analysis there. Priorities, that would be the site.
So I think that whole phased approach to the sewer, where the computer crashed, that, that, it very selectively shows that area in the southeast corner of town as the first priority of the year.
No, not necessarily. Uh, that was done, um, by the greatest need to solve the larger number of people who were having problems. And that's how that was set up. Because their regular configuration was changed and, um, we went to the ponds area of town, the lower one and the lower, right-hand corner. Because there was a much greater need, there was no town water out there. There was a lot of buried failed systems. And there was a history with the Board of Health of failed systems that weren't, uh, being properly maintained and they're probably within 50 feet of their drinking supply. So they're doing a great job of recycling, but not meant to. And that, we turned our whole priorities around when, when these things came forward.
Hey, did you say at one of our meetings a while back that both Westfield and Easthampton are willing to buy our sewer?
No, we want to buy our sewer, we have to pay for it.
No, what I'm saying.
At one time, yes. Um, Westfield had a regional agreement with us, um, to go over there back probably 12, 15 years ago. And that door's been closed right now, can be opened again. But, um, East Hampton, who has, we have talked to in the past, have opened up communications to go there, which will be more advantageous and probably fewer pump stations. Uh, and the reason why that is, is their industrial base has subsided a bit and they're looking for our kind of sewer.
Well, I think you were saying the southeast, it's outside of the town, right?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, they built a, I don't, I won't say it's mothball, but there's a plant that can be converted over and the impellers can be changed and they can take our flow fairly easily from that section of town. And we also talked about taking stuff down Route 10 with East Hampton and, and bringing it to the, their pump station at the corner of, not in the vicinity of Coleman Road and Long Miko area.
So it's, it's a critical issue and a fundamental one that it has the ability to really control and affect the character of the town. So it's, it's definitely something the implementation committee, I think, would do well to facilitate the work of a lot of different stakeholders in town on that issue.
Right.
I did want to point out that I didn't know that this meeting was happening tonight because I did look at the select agenda and didn't find out until this morning sometime in the middle of the afternoon. And the meeting members of the master plan committee, the four of the committee, which has carried out the work for the last 12 to 18 months, all showed up tonight. I think that's a tribute to their commitment to this process. I have about four hours in this.
I saw the emails flashing around today. Um, just to be clear, this is a joint meeting between the planning board and the select board. The next course of action is for the planning board to take a vote. But before that happens, we're going to check with town council and David's going to check your resources to see whether it's a public hearing or simply a meeting and a vote. Um, at that point in time, the select, it would come to us, I believe. The select board would take a vote to support it, am I right? Or is that?
Well, the legal requirement is that the planning board approve it. It would be wonderful.
Well, I think, I think it certainly should, if it doesn't have our support, then it's probably worth more, but, um, it should have our support if, if it's going to go forward.
I believe it needs to come to, to the select board from the planning board and the warrant request.
Right. And then go to town with some sort of article on town, on town meeting.
Which is not required, but it's a fairly common practice to ask either the town council or the town meeting.
But in, but in that vein, someone should talk to Robert.
At the meeting.
No, before the meeting to get it on the warrant, to get the, to get a summary of slideshow on there.
That's, that's before, I think.
Okay. Just, just to avoid any misunderstandings at town meeting. Are you, are you thinking beforehand or as part of the town meeting?
Well, town meeting will open the discussion within itself.
Yeah.
At a time where probably hopefully to answer a lot of questions beforehand, but.
But I was thinking that we'd have a presentation during the meeting. Because people wouldn't show up beforehand necessarily.
That's true.
Wouldn't understand it. So we'd need Robert's.
But the only thing I can tell you is, um, it's a Tuesday night meeting and we don't have the same window that we would on a Saturday.
No. Probably let's see how extensive the warrant is. And we, we've gone to two, Tuesday nights. Um, is that how, I forget how it goes, whether it goes to Wednesday or goes into next Tuesday.
I don't know.
I forget when we're on it. All right, anything else? With that being said, we'll move on to other business unless you have anything for us. Thank you. Keith, are you in? Sure. All right. We have, we have these PCFs that we need to deal with. That's why Chief is here.
Well, what is the other two? We had two other ones, police department ones.
Oh, I didn't, Maggie, I didn't have the police department ones here. They didn't bring them down yet?
No. I'm wanting to make a motion to sign those in case they don't bring them down. To sign the two police department, I believe both of them.
No, they're part-time.
They're from auxiliary to part-time. Uh, there's two officers.
Are you hearing this?
I'm just trying to see the names here.
They're, they're, they were there other weeks.
Yeah, I just throw them in glasses. Philip Lemire and Scott Chester, is that right?
Just the meeting.
Uh, two part-time officers. Uh, we don't, I want to make a motion that we authorize them to sign those when we get them back from finance committee.
Barring any concerns of the finance committee?
Can I stand?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then additionally, we have these.
Um, we have, they're not out of sync for a change, but I'd like to get these in order. Regina Shea Sullivan, William Colita, and Joseph Henning for an extension of 12 weeks on their current, um, interim appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're getting better at this, Dave.
Hey, you did good. Sure. Shoulder's good. Next time, we'll be ten minutes.
Uh, then we have somebody, once. I have, oh, I was just going to keep those. I have a, a bill warrant dated March.
We didn't read last week, we didn't read.
March 31st, numbered W-13.
You have to sign it.
1338, and the amount of $388,903.65. You can't sign it, right?
Jackie, can you, she's got anything on the bill.
You got anything, she have anything on the bill? We'll go put two signatures on it.
There's a payroll warrant here too.
Yeah. And we have a, oh, great. My wife in here? I guess he's school on that. He wants a bill warrant for his school anyway. Uh, so that's why I leave that. This is a bill warrant, it's signed by him.
Yes, see, I was just forgot the material that was with the bill warrant.
Oh, with that, with that bill warrant that we signed, okay. Okay, so that goes. Simon Donovan signed that.
She worked for the school.
Oh. And then we have a payroll warrant, P1339, for $234,610.56. And Jackie can't sign any more. All right, um, on this issue that's addressed on the front, would you try and set something up next week? Next week is going to be good for me. With the parties that be, I've had enough of that.
Same.
Time character. So we did, we did that, we did the audit letter, we did the inner town, we did the school move, we did the election warrant, upcoming events. Meeting of April 2nd, I will be here, the meeting of April 9th, I cannot be here.
I'll be here. It's unnecessary to have the 9th. We don't have to sign the warrant. Three weeks ahead of time and that's coming, not at the end of April.
Well, when's town elections? So you need a warrant there and you need a town meeting warrant. What do we say to town?
Well, we don't have to have, we can sign, come in and sign the warrant, we don't have to be here, am I right?
No, yeah, that's right.
May 6th is the election, so that'll be seven days prior.
So you, so we need the meeting at the end of April.
Reggie, we just signed the warrant for 14 days and now we're going to seven.
The reason why is annual town meetings, annual town elections, the annual town caucus are seven days, which is something that you would normally do. Special town meetings, the state primaries, something new that came up this year for town clerk. Those are 14-day notices.
Well, here's what I'd like to do, I'd like to make them all 14 days. So I'd like to have, you know, let's, let's get them all signed in consistent, in, not inconsistent, in a consistent manner, let's sign them all 14 days in advance. Let's make the assumption that they're all 14 days and we can't go wrong.
Well, here's the other one, I think, is it the, does one election or is it the posting is 21 days? Is the posting 21 days for town meeting or a special town meeting?
No.
What's 21 days for?
I don't know.
Because I can remember, there was a period where we had 21 days. And I, I don't know if that was for an election or for a town meeting.
That may be something for town clerk to do where she has to do with the ballots and setting up the.
Maybe, I don't know, I just remember we missed a deadline when we had a hand slap once.
Well, that was when I first came on, you mean talking about that time? Yeah, I don't remember what that was. Um, let's make the assumption they all have to be signed 14 days in advance and then if somehow we don't get a quorum on them last night.
To be honest with you, that's what I do as a matter of practice for myself, knowing.
Because we frequently don't enter the quorum, so let's assume they all have to be signed 14 days in advance. But that does, does not require us to meet on the 9th.
No.
Um, it's signed, yeah, it's ready to. The question anymore, it comes, is when is finance going to come down with the budget?
Their last meeting is April 2nd with the department. And then they want to meet alone on April 9th to review the budget and then present it to you on April 16th. Have a budget hearing for April 23rd.
So unless something emergency comes up April 9th, doesn't seem like we have to meet.
Okay.
Why don't you send something out? Keep it posted.
Okay.
And send something out terminating the meeting if, if we don't need it. And everybody should remember, March 28th is town caucus.
It's Thursday.
That's, yeah, Thursday this week. Um, do we have any minutes, Reggie?
No.
All right, updates and liaisons?
Uh, I, I reviewed the job description that Reggie had and I gave her, um, changes and, um, I would like to see those incorporated into the job description.
For?
For, for, for my position.
Highway. There is one on, in the packet tonight, is that, which one is that, Reggie?
That's the one I worked on.
That's not the one with edge changes.
That's not the one with edge changes.
So I'm, I'm going to save it into a Word.
You just had to me and I can do that, okay? And then we'll have it.
All right, so that's, no, we don't have to do anything with that.
Rick Yard Road, there was another one, I think Billy's here for this. Um, we had a discussion, you know, the going over, um, the police chief's job requirements and we talked about, um, there was one item in there that was never changed and I thought we had a discussion to change it to a basic EMT instead of an intermediate. And, um, Billy brought this to me and, um, he thought it was changed too. And I know we had the discussion, Reggie was going to check into it. And I, you know, I just want to make sure that we had the discussion and I thought we had the outcome as a basic.
Two minutes and.
And you said fire chief or police chief or you meant fire?
I meant fire chief. Did you find any here? I'm not going to run through this whole time.
Oh, it's right there.
Where?
The intermediate level, you said key.
Um, I thought we, we talked about removing it. Will you just make a motion? Well, I'd like to make a motion, make that a basic EMT as a requirement and preferred is a intermittent level.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing limit, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the job's been posted, so, the job has been posted since the beginning.
So we should be.
So does that matter?
It should be reposted because it's lowered the requirements.
Or we could, uh, well, you can, yeah.
Because otherwise you're not, the public's not going to be aware of the change in the qualifications. Where is it, how much did it cost us to post it, Reggie?
I don't even know the invoices, yeah.
Roughly.
About, can you answer?
And we, um, I know you went up to the associations and that was an email. So we can still. So, we can still do that, but we would have to extend the deadline? Yeah, I would think. I think the deadline is, is it April first or, or it's seventeen, another month?
What?
It's the first week of April.
I think you're going to have to repost it with a new deadline.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we're changing it, making it a basic EMT requirement, and what was the second requirement?
Preferred intermediate, right.
Is that the, basic EMT?
Required, but you said.
The, whatever was posted is preferred. You can put on a preferred or.
I think just for clarity's sake, we should probably make a motion to repost it, just to make sure.
I'd make a motion to repost it with the change.
And the new date, with date.
Do we have to post it for a month, Reggie?
No, I was just going to ask, how long do you want to keep it?
Whatever the minimum is.
Yeah, shortest period of time.
Okay.
And so, closing, maybe, I don't know how fast you can get it out, but April fifteenth or April thirtieth or whatever, it's a mistake. Brickyard Road, there's a letter here on Brickyard Road, but that should be.
You got any to?
No, it should be in executive session.
Okay, well, why would we have to?
Anything else tonight? Anybody, time, public, going once, going twice?
I just want to let the board know that my original date, I'm pushing back two and a half months for retirement because of even more financial, financially in my favor by waiting two and a half months longer, so I'm just letting them know.
What's that, two and a half months?
I'll probably stop working, probably middle October and retire from the town completely before the end of the year.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, I would take a motion to adjourn and go.
You have the executive.
Right.
He's going to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go into the executive session. Under Master and Law, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty-One, Number Two, I think it's Number Two.
Number Eight. It has to do with interviewing.
Oh, consider interviewing applicants for employment. My preliminary.